Form here in just a second. We've got a lot of business tonight, so we will move along as expeditiously as possible, along with trying to do things in an orderly fashion. Starting with District One, going to District Five. Can we state your name and location, please, and that will determine our form?
Yes, hello, Jason Capel, District One, sixty-three fifteen Spotswood Trail, Gordonsville, Virginia, two-two-nine-four-two, greatest town in America.
Here you go.
George Jancy, District Two. I'm at my home at one-six-one-seven-oh Cox Mill Road, Gordonsville, Virginia, two-two-nine-four-two. The best district in Orange County.
District Three, Donald Brooks, ninety-two fifty-eight Everon Road, Unionville, Virginia. The best little village this side of the Mississippi.
Julie Zelmanker, District Four, three-four-one-zero-four Indian Town Road, Locust Grove, Virginia.
Jim Hutchison, five-two-five Harrison Circle, Locust Grove, Virginia, the greatest non-town in Orange County.
All right, it does appear that we have the Planning Service Director on, does appear we have District One Supervisor on also, and a few other folks. So our quorum has been determined. This meeting is being held electronically pursuant to and in compliance with the continuity of government ordinance or in orders to effectuate changes in certain deadlines and to modify public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with COVID-nineteen pandemic. This was adopted April of twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, by the Orange County Board of Supervisors according to Virginia Code fifteen-point-two-dash-fourteen-thirteen. This meeting is also accessible by YouTube at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.youtube.com forward slash channel forward slash U-N-C-L-E-M dash one L-G-R-X-Y-D-F-K-C-P-one-eight dash J-O-Q. That can be found on the Orange County website under Planning Commission, if you did not catch all of that. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and there will be no physical public access during the meeting, and there will be no opportunity for public comment. We would ask for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda, I think, with some modifications. I'm not sure whether SUP twenty-dash-zero-five is still on there.
Mr. Chairman, I will defer to our legal counsel, but I believe that you will want to call the hearing to order for discussion and then continue it.
That's what my plans was. Is that okay, Mr. Lansing?
That's fine.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Well, Chairman Brooks, so is this the continuation of the SUP, or is this the this is the start of the public hearing, right? I mean, the last was a work session, so is this continuation right on the agenda? Is that the right language, just for posterity's sake?
That's the right. Well.
Well, that's a good point, Mr. Capel. I think you do need to open the public hearing tonight.
So we will open it, then we will, it appears that we will move it after we open it, so I guess continuation is a good word, but you want to change that word, Eric?
No, continuation is fine.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Hutchison's motion to approve the agenda, Chairman Brooks.
Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
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 It appears that it's been approved unanimously. Approval of the minutes for February fourth, I'm assuming everyone's got them and read over them and.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept those minutes that presented. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposition, seems like that passes unanimously also. We have no new business noted here for tonight. We do have several public hearings. We will go through the process of these public hearings as they're listed here. The only thing I'm gonna do different tonight, where I normally call each district representative starting at one and going to five, or starting at five, going to one, I'm gonna let you call my attention to something tonight, if you have something to say, and then I'll recognize and you go ahead. Hopefully, that will make us go a little expeditiously instead of going down each one. That's the only change I'll do for the commissioners. That's just for the commissioners, anybody that's listening, that's just a little change of format, how we get the participation of the commission. Public hearing, continuation of SUP two-zero or twenty-dash-zero-five Redfish Solar Partners LLC has applied for special use permit to construct and operate a solar energy generation facility on vacant property located on Cutharpen Road in Locust Grove. The property is own agricultural and is identified as tax map parcels five through four, containing forty-eight-point-twenty-nine acres, and five through four A containing forty-eight-point-two-nine acres. The property is situated in agricultural two, recommended future land use category as described in Orange County Comprehensive Plan. I'm gonna defer to Sandra first, so she can get us on course, and then we'll take appropriate action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will remember, as Mr., I think Hutchison or Capel one referred to earlier, at your last meeting, you held a work session on this item. We had made an error in the tax map number in the legal ad, so, but that ad did reference tonight's meeting. So we did re-advertise with the corrected tax map number, extended the public comment period by a week, and with the intent of tonight, you're opening the public hearing and potentially taking action on this matter tonight. It did come to staff's attention last week that we had not addressed the state code required, section fifteen-point-two-dash-twenty-two-thirty-two review for solar facilities. In consultation with our legal staff, it was that that review requires a public hearing. So tonight, we are requesting that the commission, you know, continue this matter again, so that we might advertise the, it's a substantial conformance with the comp plan is the determination that needs to be made. So the, we would like for you to continue the public hearing until your April first regular meeting date, so that we might advertise that substantial conformance public hearing, allow time for public comment on that matter, and then, by code, you can take action on both matters at the same meeting. So I think one of the things that will need to be determined tonight is whether you wish to include in this advertisement, a public comment period that would precede the April first meeting, so that potentially you could take action on April first, or if you wish to schedule it the way, you know, we've been doing through throughout, you know, much of our pandemic response period, in which you open the public hearing, then leave it open for a period of time for receipt of public comment. That can work both ways. Just because this matter has been before you for some time, and I actually probably wouldn't anticipate any, you know, particularly different content to the public comments than what we've received so far, I would recommend that we advertise the public comment period in the ad for April first, so that you might act on this matter at that time.
Commissioners, do we feel that we can live with that suggestion? I'm strongly pushing for that, that we can move it along, we can vote both way, but what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, so what, what I heard is that we could allow additional public comments between now and whenever the next meeting is? Is that, is that what I heard? I mean, my leaning is to always allow more comments.
Well, yes, the, the public hearing for the substantial comment, our conformance review, I mean, it's, it's the same as any public hearing, where we would be soliciting public comment on, on that topic. So yes, I think the, the decision is, would you have your comment period preceding, I mean, to, to, to begin and, and end before that meeting on April first, or do you wish to extend the comment period after April first to potentially a second meeting in April? I, I'm not sure, and Eric might comment on this, if, if we pushed it to May, that, that we may run into some other time issues if we tried to push it to May.
Well, I have a question. Why, why do we need to make that decision now? Why can't we just open the public hearing, and if we decide to close it at the next meeting, we close it, and if we decide not to, then we keep it open? Is that an option?
Well, we have to advertise a second public hearing. The substantial conformance, review for substantial conformance with the comp plan is a separate hearing required by a certain Virginia Code section. So we have to advertise a second public hearing on this matter that's on that particular aspect of the project review. That determination needs to be made before you can formulate your recommendation on the special use permit application.
Sandra, if, if we go ahead and use the one April date for the meeting, why don't we just follow normal stuff and say, extend the comment period to the twenty-fifth of March?
We, we can do that. I mean, we, we certainly can do it that way.
I mean, I have no objection to receiving more comments from, from the community.
Well, and, and we, 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 we must accept additional comments on, on this other topic, so.
Okay, so we need a motion for that effect, so Mr. Hutchison, do you feel so desired?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and make a continuation for SUP twenty-zero-dash-zero-five until one April with a public comment period ending appropriately, I think around the twenty-fifth of June, if that, or twenty-fifth of March, if that's appropriate, Sandra.
Well, actually, we'd want it a little bit earlier than that, because your agenda package will need to go out on the twenty-sixth, so I would think the twenty.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, I think the twenty-third would be good.
Okay, I have no problem with that. So with a public comment period ending on twenty-three March, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, this is George Jancy, I second that motion.
Okay, if we move the second, that we will move it to public comment to three-twenty-three-twenty-one and move the date of the hearing, continue it to four-one-twenty-one. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Chair, if it's aye, it's unanimously moved along.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we have the second public hearing, which is a continuation of SUP twenty-dash-zero-four. That's the Mountain View Community Church, and they have applied for special use to construct and operate a residential drug and alcohol addiction treatment center on their property, identified as tax map parcel seven dash sixteen A, located at the twenty-three-five-forty Raccoon Ford Road. This property contains eight-point-zero-two-nine acres, zone agriculture, situated in agricultural one, recommended future lands use category described in the Orange County Comprehensive Plan. Before we get to start it, I will say we have received numerous public comments on this by way of letter, by way of email, and by way of, I would say pseudo-criticism. Just want to make sure that everybody understands, we do not read those, they actually go into record as a document. We asked that, Ms. Thornton, do you have anything to add before we get into this? And ask the applicant, is applicant on board?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just, 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 I know you didn't mean this, but just for the record, what you meant is, we, we don't read them here on this meeting, right?
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
We didn't read them, we just don't read them in the meeting tonight. Absolutely.
Yes, I spent the better part of, yeah, I spent the better part of ninety minutes reading them, so I.
Yeah, we do read them, and trust me, we did read them, because commissioners talked about the voluminous amount of it, it was. So we do read them, we just do not read them into record of this meeting, they're placed into record by their writing. Is that better clarity? Okay. Ms. Thornton, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, just one matter that I wanted to follow up on, that you, of course, your hearing continued to this date for the receipt of public comments on the application. During your, the public hearing on February fourth, staff was asked to clarify, one of the recommendations from the Call Pepper Soil and Water Conservation District, kind of specifically regarding the use of a clear water diversion, I was advised by Richard Jacobs, who does air reviews there, that, you know, that his rationale for that is, is concern about potential for runoff from the forested slope above the playground and existing parking lot. However, he did also indicate that this is something that can be worked out during the, the site plan review process, and I would just note that, that most typically, as, as the, the staff does review, plan review comments from the Soil and Water Conservation District, in most cases, all of their recommendations are incorporated into the approval of the project.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that now? All right. And did everybody get the last amendment to this SUP, meaning the budget, sent to them by email late this afternoon?
And, and Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I would like to point out that the, the tardiness of your receipt is, is not the, the fault of the applicant. This was a piece of information that we at the staff level had neglected to send to you earlier in the week.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody got the budget, everybody get the budget.
District Five got it.
Okay. One, two, and four? I got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Received.
Okay, so that's, so make sure we all.
Yes, I have it.
Okay, so make sure we all had what was planned out there for us, and the Board of Directors therefore. I had asked at the last meeting, when this began, that Mountain View Community Church, if they would look over some of the different concerns of the neighbors and things of that nature. So this time, I will give Mountain View six to seven minutes, and I'm, I'm gonna really hone in on six to seven minutes, if you want to readdress or resubmit some statements that you thought, that you think that's necessary for the approval of your application at this time.
Mr. Brooke, this is Mark Jenkins, Mountain View Community Church. Just to clarify, we were told, and I'll do it either way, we were told that we would be asked specific questions by the commissioners, and at the end of their questioning of us, we would be given seven or eight minutes to do things that weren't addressed. I've got a twelve-page, single-spaced response to pretty much every question that was written on every one of those letters, including commissioner comments. I won't be able to go through all those, but I thought there'd be some specific ones that commissioners wanted to address. Out of those letters, we'll be happy to speak. We put very concise answers, because I knew it was, you guys are happy to go at it, but I want to make sure we hit the ones you want spoken, addressed.
Okay, so if you want to do it that way, that's fine, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't really, the chair doesn't have a really opinion one way or the other. Any commissioner who wants to go first, just go ahead if you have a question.
I guess the only question, this Jim Hutchison of District Five, did you have a community meeting, and if so, what were the results of that meeting?
Brooke, you want to speak to that?
Sure, yes, Mr. Hutchison, we did have a community meeting. We held it on Sunday, February twenty-eighth, at the Mountain View Orange Campus. We think overall, it went really well. We did invite the neighbor, the adjoining neighbors, all of them, all of the addresses that Sandra was able to provide to us. We also put it in the newspaper, put it on the radio, to try to get people specifically in that district, or anybody that would like to hear some concerns or comments to come. Overall, I think it went really well. We did have some people that were known in opposition, just because they had submitted their letters to, you know, the public comment section, and so I think it went beautifully. I think we were able to clear up a lot of misconceptions. I think we were finding, there was just a lot of misinformation out there, so that was a great opportunity to do that.
Would you elaborate on some of that misinformation that was cleared up?
Sure, absolutely. There was a miscommunication that this would be a men's home, and it would not, we would start off as a women's home first. There was another misconception about us being a treatment facility in the sense of a clinician treatment facility, or a state licensed treatment facility, although it does mention the word treatment in our strategic plan, that was not something to, to include on a clinical-based, clinical-based or state licensed facility. This would be merely recovery support. There was also some just concerns overall that we heard in the letter and that we heard on Sunday night, just about the safety of others, and we, we certainly took those into consideration, but overall, it was great to clear some of those up, and we had, you know, over a hundred-page slide that we were able to address some of the main concerns, some of the concerned neighbors that we knew of specifically that we had spoken to. Unfortunately, we're not able to make that meeting, so we do have the PowerPoint available, and we're discussing on how we're going to let the community view that specific meeting, because it was recorded, and Mark can speak a little bit more to that as well.
Yes, we, we made a mistake of recording that in fourG or fourK. I now have an eighty-gig video file that I can't figure out how to upload anywhere, and we have to shut it down to make it available for people, so that was a mistake on our part. However, we got quite a good response. People realized it was a woman's home, or the, and I didn't know there was even the existence of a homeowners association in ag land, but there is on that road. The gentleman who leaves that was there. He spoke, I guess he and his wife, those two sitting beside him, the woman's home, he was like, well, that, that's definitely palatable. The next thing he asked was, I would feel much more comfortable if violent felons were not allowed to be there. I said, that's already part of our assessment, because remember, this is not a jail, we don't have solitary confinement, these women have to learn and live together for twelve months, so violent felonies are not possible. Now, the situations where it gets a little, we looked at FBI stuff about how they rank, I mean, if a, if a young woman got drunk and crashed her car and killed someone, that's manslaughter, you got a violent felon type thing on the record, but five years later, she's still dealing with alcohol, would you exempt her because of that felony record? To me, that'd be a case by case in that situation. Once we were able to deal with, oh, and sex offender, well, that's a whole different ballgame, we said, no, we're not able to do that, because, well, we were able to figure that out afterwards, because once you have a sex offender in a certain area, you get tagged on, not GIS, but your, the address, because people check when they move in, are there registered sex offenders around her, around you? Well, when that person leaves the program a year later, we're not sure that tag is going to leave our property. So we just made the decision as a board that violent offenders, that was already part of it, but sex offenders, we would not allow in the program either. And when I got to that point, the, the mood of the room kind of really calmed down, and people just started talking to each other about the needs in Orange, and how we could work together. And so, I'm not saying there are not others who in vehement opposition, but for those who came, one-on-one face-to-face conversations seemed to mitigate a lot of the angst, and we do have that recorded, I do have the PowerPoint, we're happy to get that to the commissioners as well. The same thing we tried to do, we tried to, we tried to create slides to address every question that we found out, we printed every letter, and we put them all around that sanctuary, allowing people, pro and con, go around and read what everybody else wrote, and so that was a positive as well.
Mark, how many people attended?
Forty-five people attended that evening.
I've only got one other question, and that is, would you all be amenable to, this is a conditional SUP with very few conditions, but would you be amenable to doing a priority for women in Orange County going into that facility as a consideration?
There's three of us on here, so I don't want to jump at it. Obviously, you would want to say anything that commissioners that you're addressing. My spirit says, there are five counties in this region that have no long-term recovery home, residential home, zero. And as one of the individuals stood up last night, or Sunday night, who is a peer recovery specialist running their own home, he, it is a men's, Mark, he said to the community, all forty-five, he said, I got four women right now, who would be benefited from this program. I'm not sure all those were in Orange County. It is our goal to address primarily the needs of these five counties, that's our hope. Would I be able to say only or solely a priority to Orange? I don't think that would be fair, and I don't think I'd be speaking for the board if I were to say yes to that. Brooke, you may also speak to it if you'd like.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
According to the, according to the heat maps that we received from Crystal Hale, and that long, three-page letter she wrote, the, obviously, I do not believe we will have a hard time filling a home with students from this region. Just doesn't appear to be an issue.
Crystal Hale's input was very, very well done.
Yes, it was.
Really good letter. And that was addressed at the meeting on Sunday night.
Chairman Brooks, Jay.
Uh, Chairman Brooks, uh, Jason Capel, couple, or District One, Jason Capel, a couple of questions. So, so could you um. So, could you go over again, um, are, are these folks allowed to leave the property? On their own? Are they able just to go and travel around?
Short answer is no. Four phases to the program, much like Team Challenge and other places around the area. The first few phases, you don't have, they don't have cars on the property. They don't have cell phones. They don't need any of that stuff. We'll have a van that's able to, to carpool each and every one or all 12 at the same time if we're going places. At the fourth phase, and this is all on the website, at the fourth phase, we want to begin that reorientation back into society. They may be even working to help pay some of their dues, you know, of their funds. So they will have jobs. We'll be working with local businesses and there are some who would like to hire. These types of individuals who are in this program. We've already had organizations speak to us about that. That's not uncommon in different parts of the county or parts of the state. At that point, they would be allowed to leave, understanding that every day when they return, they will be tested for drugs. Upon return to that property.
So, so they could just leave? And, and forgive me, I, I have a little bit of personal experience with this and so I'm asking these questions for a reason. So um. They would be able to leave for work or would they just be able to leave and roam the county?
No, no, and I think, Richard, you could.
I mean, later on, I'm talking in the last, when you, at the end there, you said they'd be able to leave on their own. I'm, I'm just asking, are they? Is it, is it just like a work thing or is it just, hey, here, here's the keys, have a car, go, go do whatever?
It's an excellent question. This is just for, Richard?
Yeah, I was gonna jump in here, Mark. I'm Richard Brook. I live in Orange County, but I'm also a part of the Cars Board. And I was, I actually was in a rehab facility down in Georgia for all men. It was a 12-month um, facility. And I did seven months residential. The first several months, I actually worked on the farm where the rehab was. And then I was um, as I got later in the program, I was taken by the, a van that belonged to the rehab and they would take me about 20 minutes away to work in a. And in a business in, in Athens, Georgia that, you know, that was part of the um, well, that supported the ministry. And um, I worked there and then, you know, at the end of the day, um, I think it was like a six-hour day, I was brought back to the facility. And then there were other times that we were taken to meetings um, in the area, whether they were AA meetings or church or um, you know, other things like that. Um, other programs that we would be taken to, but typically it was done by, um, you know, you had your leaders in the program that would take you to these meetings or to work and then you were brought back. So you were not allowed to run, you know, run the streets or drive to wherever you wanted to.
Okay, um, and then, um, so what I heard you say, Brooke, was that it's a women's facility, but I also heard you say at the beginning. And then, Mark, I heard you say that once you let people know it was a women's facility, and there's a couple of other things you added. That that really changed people's view. So, you know, I'm wondering if, and, and I. I, I gotta be honest with you, right? I mean, I struggle with this thing, right? I really do because. I, I think it is a little bit of an impact on the county. I, I do think we're gonna have to, you know, as far as police and all that, you know, but I'm very sympathetic to the um. To the uh, cause. And so. I, I'm just wondering, you know, I've got a number of concerns. I, I think you all have great intentions, um. But to, but to say it's a women's only, but then caveat it with someday, maybe not. To say that we don't allow s- sex offenders and, and that's instantiated in our um. Board-directed rules, which aren't part of the SUP, uh, same with violent offenders. And then I'm curious too about your license, licensing, you know, what happens if you lose your license or, or if there's some issue that causes you to lose your license? I'm, I'm just wondering if you would be willing to kind of instantiate some of those things in the conditions and. You know, where, you know, s- sex offenders, you know, that's part of the condition, like it's not just in your. In your bylaws, which you all can change. I mean, and I, you know, I'm not, listen, I'm, I'm just saying, right? I mean, these, you know, so, so could. Would you be willing to accept some conditions like that where the things that you just stated that, that you said made people, the locale, feel more comfortable? Would, would you be willing to put those in the conditions? And then the other thing that I think is important is this governing body that you're, you're. Voluntarily uh, submitting to the VAR, the V A R R, the N A R R, you know, could we have a condition that would say that? You know, if you lose your license, you need to notify the county and, and that. You know, there's some sort of review or some sort of trigger that, that, you know. If you don't get your license back, you don't get to keep operating, you know, um, and, and I know that's a little. Confused, you know, I didn't present that exactly right, but, but I'm just wondering how you feel about that generally.
Mark, before you answer that, I did just want to clarify, Mr. Capel, what I meant by women only is that the home itself. That specific home would only be for women. If later down the road, God provides a way and we provide. A way to build a men's facility far away from that, that's what I meant. I didn't, I didn't mean intermixing them at any point in time or, you know, building one right next to it for men. That, that's not what I was alluding to, so. I said, I'm sorry for that, um.
No, what, what I heard was that you could, um, thank you for the clarification. What I heard was that you could decide to make it a men's facility.
No, no, that's not.
No, actually, I mean, I think you actually could unless it's in the, in the conditions is what I'm saying.
There's no, right, but mixing them, no.
Well, right, I mean. I know they do that. I know they do mix them, but.
Mr. Capel, to your point, uh, the commissioners or the board supervisors in Orange could lay any condition before us on Culpeper did the same thing. Obviously, we're learning from others, so when it comes to sex offenders and violent offenders, um, that could be part of your, your, your own test. Related, that's, that's totally fine. That is of the purview of the board to do such things. Um, when it comes to, the question was asked by the head of the HOA, the very thing you asked just now. How often is the uh, board not licensed? Or how often is the home certified? That's a yearly process. Two weeks from now, the director of VAR, uh, the executive director and the gentleman we were going to meet with yesterday will be coming to Culpeper. Uh, to meet with us. They cannot certify the home until it's built. But if you look at their lists that I believe we offered you, it's pretty rigid. The point I like about it is I want a standard to live up to personally. I don't want to be figuring it out on the fly. And these guys have figured it out to be can, have continuity across the state of Virginia. I personally, as the president of the board, want that. If you wanted to make that a condition of operation, you could understand that we're voluntarily. Putting ourselves under VAR because we want that level of um, quality. We don't have to. And we clarified that on Sunday night to those who came out to the meeting. It's not a condition of us operating. It's a willingness on our part to. Make sure our standards are adequate across the state.
Sure, well, you know, one of the, thank you for that. One of the letters I read. Um, you know, and, and this is something that I think is important to know and I think it's important that you're, you're signing up for these, but one of these letters, letters indicated that. These sort of facilities are, are just automatically regulated and that's just not true. And so, you know, that's, that's a little bit of missing from, not from your part. I mean, you would think that these would be, you know, there would be some. Governing body, but you know, I get, I get more comfortable with this um, on the risk side, accepting the mission's important. I get more comfortable with this on the risk side when I hear. The things that you're saying that, that did make some of the community. Feel a little better when I hear you saying that you'd be willing to, to make them conditions in the SUP. That makes me feel. Better about it. And, and if you're, if you're already saying you're gonna do it, why not? And um. And as far as the, the licensing, like I, you know, one of the conditions to me is, is the county would need to know. You know, you, you, there'd be a notification process perhaps and, and not that, not, I wouldn't advocate that you, you lose your SUP immediately. But you know, there's some way to fix things and I'm sure you get some time to rectify any issues and I would imagine there's going to be something. I've been through many inspection processes. But I, I feel like a notification to the county that, that that's occurred. And some visibility on the plan to, to get you back licensed and then some. You know, and I don't think this would happen, but if, if for whatever reason, you just never get licensed again, that, that that might be the end of the SUP.
Yeah, that's legitimate. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um. I got a couple of questions. Let me, let me just to follow up on some of that. Help me with no clinical and no state license. What are you going to be licensed to? What would that license say? You certified under the Department of Health to do what?
I've certified under the Department of Health. That was one of the clarifications I've been trying to work out for several weeks now. It's a, it's a licensure, um, credentialed, not licensed. Treatment centers, state-run are licensed.
Right.
Health, all that. These residential homes like we're doing, like Team Challenge, like Edom Home at Liberty University. These are residential homes that are credentialed. You have. In some cases, Brooke, please help me, Richard, you have Liberty graduates, just for example, Liberty graduates that have their degrees. Focused on addiction, uh, recovery, uh, and they are credentialed in courses that they've taken. You've got.
So hold, hold up, hold up a second for me. So the, the, the short answer is, because I, I think I'm getting confused and, and the last conversation. Um, got me there. There is, there is no state licensure for what you're doing. They just recognize you're operating this type of facility.
I can agree with the first part of your statement. I'm not sure what the second part means that they recognize.
Well, the second part means when I called, they and did some inquiry, they're just basically saying, we know you exist and you're housing people there. But we don't, we're not saying that you're, you're state sanctioned for anything and we haven't checked you as we would nursing homes or as we would other type places. It's, it's no harm, no foul, but it's really nothing other than they acknowledge you have a home with people in it.
Brooke, would you say yes to that? I mean, is it clear?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, who do you mean they?
The state of Virginia.
The state of Virginia. So. I'm not exactly sure about the state and how they do all of their licensing for that, but right, we would be. Um, a recovery support home that would be accredited through. Nar and VAR, but we would not be operating under a state-licensed facility to where state-licensed, what, whoever governs that. Um, you know, whether it be the health department, all of these different places coming in, Department of Social Services, all of that, we would be regulated under any of that. So no, this is like what Mark was saying, a voluntary um, accreditation through this residential home. Hopefully that clears something.
You call the Department, you call the Department of Health, they would give you all the treatment centers, they would know about our existence.
Right.
Just list them, uh, licensed.
But that's all they, that's all they would know.
That's all they know. Correct.
Okay, okay. So um, the, the next, going to your budget and, and I'm not getting into any detail on it. But I really, there's no structure building, when I say structure, talking about a building included in the budget.
Okay.
Just the next three years.
Yeah, just for clarification, you're not looking at the budget. What you're only looking at was a snippet. Of one of the three pages that I used on a slide last month that you could not see because there was a line going down through it. The only reason that slide was created was to let you know that a budget with Chris Pearson, Principal CPA here in Culpeper has helped us create. Basically a four-year budget, zero-year budget and year one, two and three. I did not present that to the county. I only acknowledged the fact. That we do have a budget. Chris Pearson has helped us develop that budget that has all the pieces that you couldn't see on that little snippet. Uh, if you want to ask questions about that, I'll have to pull this up. Not sure I can share the screen from where I'm at. But you, we could address questions you may have or.
That's okay, I, I, I'm, I'm just.
Correct, you can't see all the.
That's okay. I, I didn't want to get that detail into it. So, the, the next question I have is that your conversation is better than your, your written proposal. You, you, you're adding on, we will do this, we will do that, this sounds good, this is great, but that's not in your written proposal. It's not there in your proposal to the county at all.
To the SUP.
And I understand you're learning as you're going, but for us to agree to allow. Up to 13 people to be housed in a place, we would want to know, I would want to know as a commissioner. A little bit more detail than that's there. And I'll give you the example of the detail it would make to know. If year one, it's gonna cost $288,000 for the tuition, where is the $36,000 per person gonna come from? I just don't know and I could be wrong. And I have some, I'm like, um, Commissioner Capel, I've had some real, real issues. With um, some addicts, um, personally in my family and, and I, and so I've dealt with some of these type things. And I'm, I'm not an expert, but I just, I, I just want some clarity here. My family member didn't have any money. I, I just don't know many addicts that have $36,000. And I, I know you may think you're gonna fund it a different way. That may be fine. And then the next question I would have, what's your first date of entry? If we say yes tonight, what's the first day you expect somebody to walk through those doors?
Let's address the first question first. Um, Brooke, would you speak to, because you've done a lot of work lately. When people keep speaking to the fact that a hundred dollars a day is a lot, it is a lot of money. But I keep hearing from Orange County that people are saying, the only place we can send our women is to Gaylax. Well, we've been doing some research into these places that we're sending them and the cost. You may not be aware of what people are paying to get there. Brooke, do you have the, just briefly?
Yeah.
Isn't Gaylax state-funded though, to some degree?
Um, so I'm not really sure. They do accept private insurance and Medicaid.
They're funded to some degree and they accept insurance and things like that. Um, so you wouldn't.
Insurance does not cover entire year program. That's why their programs aren't. They're thirty.
Doesn't help.
Something's better than nothing, but we've recognized the limitations of 30-day programs. I don't care how much you pay for them. We're doing something different. Um, we've had people throughout the store for years where we have mothers, grandmothers who are paying for their children. Their grandchildren to go to these, sometimes two, three times until grandma just gives up. We've had that experience. Um, but Brooke can speak just briefly to some of them, um, outside of Team, well, I'll let Brooke do it.
Right, so um.
Before Brooke, Brooke, before you do that, and I'm not gonna cut you off there, I, I'm, I'm very familiar with that. That's, that's the familiarity I have with. Helping support that addict's recovery in some type of function that, or their producer. I get that part, I do. You don't have to explain that to me, Brooke. I, I get that part, I really do. I don't have any more questions at this time.
I could just say that Gaylax right now is $300 a day and you, $13,500 is due on the day of admission. Every woman that is leaving Orange County and going to Gaylax. $13,500 going out somewhere. I don't know if that's coming out of your health and welfare, $5 million portion of your budget in Orange County, I have no idea. $13,500 is due on the day of admission for the women leaving. That's a forty-five.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Brooks or any commissioner?
Any other commissioners?
You would be very helpful to us with. You would be very helpful to us with the detail. The S U P that we turned in obviously is very generic because I didn't want it by thirty pages. That's why we offered the strategic plan and the full website for information. We have received a lot of clarification of these, this last month as people in the county that we've met with has helped us to clarify things. It has been a very good process. There hasn't been a fundamental change to our program. Wording has changed for clarification, which has been good, uh, perspective on cost. Team Challenge is the only entity, and that's in Shandor Valley, that right now, which I did not know until today. They have, they only have a seven hundred fifty-dollar induction fee and three hundred and fifty dollars a month for the first phase for four months. After that, the people go to work and they help fund their own tuition. And I thought, what a great place to get to. I had no idea how they're funding all that. Um, but that was the least expensive out there. The rest of them were astronomical.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner has a question or comment? All right, then I have one more then. I thought we will get to the, help me with the location a little bit, um, um. Please, uh, that's a real big issue with a lot of, with a lot of citizens. Help me with the location. I understand it's the church's property, but just help me in general with that location. Why was it picked?
Well, so the, the pick first was because we own it and with the existing facility there, it allows tremendous multi-use for the students in the home. Therefore, the house itself did not have to be astronomically big to house people and do all the training within the same building. We can build a residential home that looks like the other homes in the area and use the church, which is a hundred yards away or less, for that. As far as the place itself. The staff, um, plan, the staff report that you received on this was very favorable to what we want to do. As I've read it again and again and again, I mean, the comprehensive section, the staff note said, yes, this is an A-one designation. Um, which would, you know, like a lot of times trying to protect land, it's not an A-two, although they did recognize that the, um, the store next door is under, is on A-one as well, although they would fall more in the category of A-two. One of the things that it hit me, Mr. Brooks, and I'll just speak to it in sixty seconds or less, is that when I got, to be honest, when I got the F, okay, I never liked getting bad grades in school, I'll just be honest with you. And I've been working for a month to bring it up. And when I got that F, I started looking at the plan and I realized that under Orange County's own designation, um, section seventy-three oh three, you give a use permitted for special use for institutional use. When I went back to your own orangecode.us and looked up your definitions, I was quite surprised to see that the definition of institutional is this. Means a property and or facility that is used for non-public education, assisted living, and group homes containing greater than eight clients and occupants. That is exactly what we are. We're a group home. We already had to go through this in Culpeper. Bob Orr met with me, he said, Mark, this building code to the state of Virginia required me to make sure that you are governed under group home, whatever that word is. He said, Mark, from my perspective, you're a group home. I said, okay, thanks, Bob. I didn't know that. So when I looked at your own definitions, I realized that institution is a, a possibility, not approved, but it's a possibility. And that the institution allows for a group of eight or more people. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. So whether it's good for the community around or neighbors per se, we're working on that. I recognize that the Orange governing documents actually afford us the opportunity or the possibility of actually accomplishing what we want to do on ag land.
By special use permit only. In other words-
Absolutely.
It's not, it's, it's, it's not about right. It's something that you can't ask for.
Yes, correct. I had, I had a commissioner in Culpeper helping me just because I'm not that good at it. First, looked at me and said, Mark, Culpeper, you might have received an F because we don't have institutional use on ag land. But in Orange, they actually make that a possibility. It's there in their governing documents. I was like, okay.
So let's move a little bit closer. If the, if the adjacent neighbors say, I don't like it, it's a, I don't want this facility there. I agree with everything that you're trying to do, but don't like your, or your location. What was your answer to that in your meeting?
Well, because the people directly besides us did not make their presence known that evening. They made their presence known that morning. That's not for public comment. Um. The fact of the matter is, is that we will do everything in our power to ease the minds of residents as to what we're trying to accomplish, relationally doing it. We had, I mean, I learned a lot Sunday night. People can come in very tense, but they can leave willing to talk, willing to dialogue, going, hey, maybe this could actually happen. Um, yeah, face-to-face is great. We hope to do something else like that. That was actually encouraged to get more neighbors. So we've written letters to neighbors far behind the ones around us. But at the end of the day, it's not the exact, the neighbor right beside me's decision. My mom and dad taught me years ago, when I was a boy, Mark, our legal rights ended our property line. When my softball went over into the neighbor's yard, I did not get to jump his fence, even though I wanted to and go get my ball. I had to go ask him if I could have my ball back. And they just drilled it. My property rights ended my property line. So at the end of the day, I'm going to do everything, we as a board will do everything we can to appease and mitigate. But at the end of the day, the board has to decide what they believe is beneficial for Orange County. I'm just trusting in that. We will continue to make our presence known and speak to our neighbors and build relationships. I want a good relationship. That may take some time for some.
Mark, do you remember what you said to me in the last meeting?
I said I-
When I asked you, you spoke to your neighbors, and you said it didn't matter one way or the other. They were going to keep their opinion. You found out it wasn't useful to talk to neighbors because, um, whether you have it before or after, neighbors kept their opinions. Do you remember saying that to me?
Here, Mr. Brooks, here's what I said at the Sunday meeting.
No, no, no. Now talk about the Sunday meeting. I'm talking about what you said to me.
I regurgitated what I said because it's been in two newspapers. That's exactly what I said. Here's what I said Sunday night. It was a Sunday before God got a hold of my heart. I'm driving along going, why does Mr. Brooks' words bother me so much? Because I was making an outcome-based decision. The outcome really didn't change that much if I met with them ahead of time or on Sunday night. But here's what did change. The people in Culpeper that I met with ahead of time and asked their opinion prior to doing S U P. Those thing people, when I meet them in Walmart, we smile, we fist bump, COVID-style. I still have a relationship with those people because I respected them as people prior to doing the S U P. I made that apology Sunday night going, I chose the outcome base as my decision for how to do it instead of the relationship. We got one of the gentlemen stood up and said, I appreciate that apology. And it was sincere. I learned something in that. So, Mr. Brooks, I apologize to the commissioners on that.
Yes, sir. I, I was trying to persuade you in that direction because in every community, there is one common denominator. That's people. In, in every church, there's one common denominator. There's people. In every village, there's people. And in America, what people think and what they believe is very important to those of us who try to meter out some type of governance. We don't always get it right. But when the folks speak, we pretty much have to listen. And sometimes I'm like you. I've changed my opinion on what I believe on something because folks have spoke. Um, I, I, I'm not, not trying to badge you, just, just want to go, any other commissioner has any other comments? Any questions?
What, one, one last one, uh, uh-
Sure.
So in, in your, in your mind, um, Mark, um. So you're going to start this venture off. I mean, let, let's say it doesn't work. I mean, how, how much time, like how much time are you willing to give it? I guess, you know, you gotta have in your head somewhere like, look, we're going to do this and, I mean, is it five years, ten years? What, do you have any?
If you want my complete honest answer, this came up last time.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on. You're a pastor. Should I expect something else?
Because I know people are watching on YouTube right now. You asked this last time. And of course, I was a little mad. The month of thinking about it, I thought, how many of us, how many of us walked into our marriage asking the same question? How long am I going to get this? I've been walking-
Well, this is, this is a little different. I mean-
I know it's not a marriage.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a calling from God that he told me, Mark, I'm doing this and you're going to help me. This was years ago. And I, I am all in. When we started the church eighteen years ago, it has a seventy-five percent fail rate. I had no prenup. We're all in. Lord, if it fails, then we're going to figure out something else. Do I have a turn? Does Brooke? I, I don't know. Does Richard? The board believes that this is something we are called to do. Yes, we have actually talked with people who've started them and they've closed up shop five years later. We used to have one in Culpeper. Maybe some of you don't even realize that, up two, two twenty-nine. We used to have one years ago.
Yep.
Eventually, they closed up shop. I don't have an answer to that one, but I'm giving it my absolute everything. And as I've learned, I'm going to pray like it all depends on God and I'm going to work like it all depends on us. And we're going to go from there. And that's the only answer I can give because I don't know the future. I can promise you, this board is committed to have high standards and bring the best possible program to these five counties. Um, that's really all I can say. If Brooke wants to speak to that, feel free, or Richard. It's a great question.
Any other question? Brooke, are you trying to speak to that?
No, you're fine.
Richard, are you trying to speak to that?
I'm fine, Mr. Brooks.
Okay, um, so I'm going to give you your, your six to seven minutes to kind of close it up if you want to. Or if you don't want to, you can let me know that too, since I promised it to you. I, I'm not demanding it or requiring it. I'm just saying if you want to do a quick five to six-minute summary, you're Brooke or both of you all together, that's fine.
Brooke, if I were, in this six minutes, um, we get very concise answers to a lot of small questions from this document. I'll pick a few, just I believe will be beneficial to the commissioners. Um, uh, people were questioning court-ordered versus case-by-case. Um, our F A Qs say this will not be a court-ordered type situation. They cannot be coming here to leave, to get out of jail. But understand, Richard, if you speak to this, I believe that the drug court in Orange is a little further along than Culpeper County. Drug court's a whole different beast. And we are being asked in multiple places to consider possibly working with drug court. I don't know all the nuances of that, but we're willing to consider as long as the people who are there don't have jail time hanging over their heads. That's one of the ones we're looking at. Um. People have spoken to, um, lockdown, um, leaving, you're always supposed to leave in the premises. No, the, the place will be well secured. Um, locks cannot be placed from the inside or the outside. Fire marshals won't allow that on this type of a situation. Um, barriers to eliminate, that was in one of the letters. What type of barriers were you going to put up? Um, the way I look at it, they're called property lines and we teach the students to respect property lines. If we need to create some Leland Cypress, it'll take five years to get to any height. Uh, we had asked a question, uh, drugs found on the property, whose fault is it? Found that absolutely fascinating. I didn't have the interest to it. Uh, but we talked to other organizations. If comparban, comparban and legal substances are found on the premises, um, we treat it just like any other normal citizen would treat it if they found on their property. We work with local law enforcement and our person's probation parole officer and we report it. Can the property owner be charged with possession of illegal substance? Not any more than a homeowner who finds legal contraband on his property and turns it over to law enforcement. We, a lot of the S U P, no, a lot of the, um, hundred and fifteen letters that came out of Baker's store, or spoke to traffic. Your own, your own plan, your own staff plan that was handed, you already had affirmation from B dot. It said, no significant impact with regards to public transportation infrastructure anticipated in conjunction with the proposed use. B dot expresses no concerns about the proposed use other than the sightline considerations and cutting down some of the trees that have grown up over the years. Insurance and liability, people were concerned about that. That was a commissioner last time. We've contacted our insurance companies and they've said, quote, we've been in contact. They said, uh, we will have adequate insurance in place. At the point in time when more insurance is needed, we will take the necessary steps. Um. Emergency service response time. Brooke, you want to speak to that? I think that's an important one, just for a minute.
Yes, um, and, Mr. Brooks, this question, we had talked about the last hearing. Um, we did have a conversation with, um, somebody at the Sheriff's Department as well as somebody at Fire and Rescue. Um, we did have a really, it was really great dialogue. They asked a lot of really good questions. And what we'd like to speak to the fact that since we're not a detox facility, that, um, population of people, there's a much higher risk of an overdose, or I'm sorry, of, you know, relapse, trying to, um, you know, live through that. Um, since we are not a detox facility, that would not be something that we anticipate having to have law enforcement there frequently. Um, so we did have some great dialogue with them. All of our staff is going to be first aid-trained, C P R-trained, mental health first aid-trained, um, as well as know how to administer Narcan. Um, but as far as emergency services go, we do not anticipate being heavily reliant on them.
A lot of small ones, I was, I'm not sure who asked it last time, and somebody brought it up in the letter going, he doesn't even know what he's talking about. Uh, I could not figure out, one of you were talking about identity last night. I'll leave it on that one. Um, I was like, where, where did I get, I forgot you had the strategic plan. I was thinking website. I didn't think there was anything on the website about that. So I got back down and I realized, uh, confusion. What did that mean? Wrote it out. I'll write, I'll read to you for what I meant. I said, what do I mean by confused identity? Here's what I mean. So many allow their identities to be created and shaped by their parents. Functional sometimes peers, boyfriends, girlfriends, and the lying voices of wounds in their head. But our foundational starting point, at least how we're doing cars, is if all students is not how they see themselves or even how most influential people around them see them, but how God sees them. You study the serenity, serenity, serenity prayer written by Reinhold Niebuhr. You'll quickly discover the understanding of our personal identity is inextricably tied to our serenity. Who are we? Whose are we? That's a big foundational understanding. So if that was taken any other way related to sexual orientation, that's not the point. The point for me was who are these people and how, what, what lies are they listening to? Because we act out and we react out of how we see ourselves. Our fundamental thing is how, to help people see how God sees them first. So I hope that cleared up the identity piece for whoever that was. That's, we have a lot of, you want these documents, I'll send them to you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, Mrs. Thornton, do you have anything?
Um, nothing additional, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um. And to the, uh, applicants, I want to say before we even move any further, we appreciate your application. Nothing we said or asked is trying to demean or take, um, away from what you're doing or from any participant of your program. We're just trying to get a real holistic view of what's going on with, um, this process and what you're proposing to us. Um, a lot of questions are asked, um, by the commissioners because citizens have asked us questions and you've certainly seen the letters. So let me just speak for the commission and, and everyone else is that there's nothing that we say or do is trying to be demeaning to anything. We're just trying to get the best information. And we're sort of like you are, Mark. We're kind of- We're just trying to get the best information, and we're sort of like you are, Mark. We're kind of fumbling our way through this. While it's new to you, it's exceptionally new to us. So we're trying to get there. And that's where we are with it. And so anything we've said or done, I apologize for all of us. And anything that any citizen has said or done, I apologize for them also. I don't think that was the intent, that it's certainly not been the intent that has hit my doorstep, or it's certainly not the intent in my mind. We're just trying to get a good resolution.
What, what you have done so far has not defined me, but it certainly has refined me.
Oh, well. We hope, we hope. Does any other commissioner have anything before we move to the next phase of this and close the public comment and close it out? And move to what our pleasure may be?
Any question? Are we done at this point so we can log off?
You can log off if you want. The commission will take their pleasure to vote and decide whether, what they wanna deal with it, or they may continue it.
I would prefer you not, not log off.
I, I didn't know what the, I didn't know what the next step was.
That's just me. I mean, yeah, I, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about, you know, some of the conditions that, that we discussed earlier. But if the, if, if those are, if the commission agrees that we might want some conditions such as we discussed, I, I would like them to, you know, voice that, but also, you know, work with you to, to scope them and, and perhaps craft them.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Do you want to place this for a vote to discuss it? And then see what the outcome is or conditions and things like that?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, we would solicit a motion for discussion purposes at this time so that we can move forward to conditions if we wanted to do that.
Are you going to close the public hearing?
I have closed the public hearing.
Then so move for discussion of the SUP 2004.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
It's removed and seconded. We closed it for discussion and further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, the, the motion is just to close the public hearing?
No, no. The motion is to have a motion for discussion so we move to the next phase.
To discuss, okay.
Discuss.
All right.
Well, Sandra, I think the public hearing was closed by the chairman.
Well, that's what, I thought, I thought, I thought so. I thought it was. That's why I wasn't, wasn't clear about what the motion was.
We really should have a motion on the floor to discuss it any further. Is that not correct, Mr. Langson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you repeat that question?
We should really have a motion on the floor to discuss it any further.
You know, I don't think it requires a motion, but it certainly doesn't hurt to have one.
Okay, so it's removed and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Just to start it off, Mr. Chairman, I concur with Mr. Capel's at least two conditions. One relates to restricting migration of, of serious felons, sex offenders, et cetera, into the program. The other is the accreditation issue. And notification, if I understand correctly, it's done annually by far in VAR and NAR. It sounds like something from Star Wars. That they get accredited, which I assume is, is under those two activities is, is a quasi license that that notification, the licensing accreditation be provided to the county, and any termination of such for county be notified. Did that cover it, Jason?
Sorry, I was on, on mute. The, the other one that I, that I mentioned was the, the women's, the women's, it being a women's facility. And I'm, you know, I'm putting that out there. That seemed to, that it would be a women's facility.
Forever.
Well, they could always come back and, and change that. I mean,
unless the SUP condition is changed.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you'd always have the ability to come back and, and, you know, I would, I would imagine that, you know, if there were a record, you know, like if you were coming, like for instance, if you had a facility, you know, in Culpeper that you'd been running for 10 years and you had a record of success, I mean, we have to, we have to define success in this context. I mean, it's, it's pretty hard, but, you know, and you had a record of good neighbor and all that. I mean, this would be a much easier process. So I would imagine if you were to run the women's facility, you know, for a period of time, and then you came back to the county and you wanted to shift gears or, or try something different, you know, assuming that, that you had done well, it should have, should be an easier process, not harder.
Mr. Chair, if I can just note, any conditions that the commission wishes to add tonight will need to be put in writing before they can be voted on. So I, I would just, I would suggest one of us, whether Sandra or me, or, or the, the moving commissioner, would, would place that in writing before laying it on the floor.
Those in writing have to be received by each of the commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to, Mr. Langson, I was thinking as you broke in. If we don't start putting a lot of conditions on this, then we, we may want to continue this. Get those things in writing, get them agreed to, and then come back. I just don't know. Not for sure. Because I wanna make sure we got the right nomenclature for the acronyms that we have, are using NARS and VARs and things like that, and the location of those things, so there's some, there's some follow-up. And that would be my suggestion to the commissioners. But I want us to hear what they are. Sandra, kind of get them together and then come back to us in writing with those. Is that acceptable?
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Mr. Chairman, were you, I, I'd heard rumor that we might be going ahead and having our two meetings per month. Is, is that an intention of yours?
That will get in the category of one of the best rumors you've heard in a while. It will be.
So, you know, what, maybe a, a suggestion would be, you know, maybe we could, as a, as a, as a body, as a planning commission body, if we could get some agreement on, on what we think the conditions could be and, and, you know, maybe have a head nod from the applicants as well, that we could vote to defer, you know, and, and get these conditions socialized and agreed to, and then come back and, and, you know, maybe at the next meeting. I mean, I, the only reason I'm saying that, I mean, I'm, I'm only hearing Hutch and I, at this point, really be in agreement on these conditions, and I'm curious what, you know, Mr. Yancey, Mrs. I'llmaker, and also you, Chairman Brooks, how, how you're feeling about him.
Well, that's kind of why I wanted to hold it up. So once they get in writing, that will may spark a different twist or word in the actual requirement that we're placing as a stipulation that may sound better or do better for it. So that's kind of where I'm at. And then I also want to make sure that what we're asking is legally sound, so let the attorney have an opportunity to take a peek at it also.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
George Yancey. Thank you, Mr. Capel, for the opening. I'd like to say at this point, you know, the merit of this, this proposal can't be debated. It's, it's needed. It's an issue that's nationwide as well as statewide and, and countywide. My challenge here and I'm trying to look at, as an old banker, bankers are risk averse. I see Orange County taking a risk. It may have great merit down the road. However, that risk is on the taxpayers of Orange County. This gentleman has already admitted that one of the reasons Culpeper hasn't had one is because they have, don't have the provision within the ag rating to allow institutional facility. To me, if we're willing to take that risk, which I am not saying I'm not, I think the residents that have this particular addiction problem should be given somewhat of a preference. And therefore, if the county is gonna foot any particular safety, fire and rescue issues, then that is merit it. So that's my two cents.
Okay. So let's do this. Can we, the appropriateness of this, Eric, would be okay, that each commissioner that may have a condition that they want placed on SUP, that we get it to Sandra by Monday at 1:00?
That sounds perfectly appropriate to me. Sandra?
And, and then Sandra can push the codified conditions out for review again let's say Thursday at 4:00. And then we can go from there. Will, will that be acceptable, Sandra? I'm sorry, Ms. Thornton, I should use your, should be more proper, I apologize.
That, that's fine, of course. Yes, that, that would be fine.
Hey, Jason, I'll work with you on those three conditions if you want.
Wow. I, I would be honored, Mr. Hutch. Usually, few people wanna work with me on anything.
Look at the slattery going back between 1:00 and 5:00.
Hey,
Quarter in the middle.
I, I can, hey, Hutch, I can, I can send you a first draft tomorrow that you can review and then you can, you know, we can send something back and shoot it over to Ms. Thornton. I'd be happy to share it with the other commissioners as well, if, if, Eric, I don't know if we can do that or not, but. And, and Mr. Chairman, I have one question to Mr. Langson, if I may. Mr. Langson, can you make sure that there isn't any pitfall in limiting a facility by gender?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was wondering. Right now, I don't know the answer to that, but that's something to look into.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna put a condition in that would render the permit somehow invalid or, or other conditions valid, but if you could just make sure that, that we're okay doing that.
Right.
That would be great.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks.
George Yancey again. I think it would probably be wise, all of us, to submit it to Sandra in terms of the preferences or the conditions, and then have it consolidated and then sent back to each of the commissioners for further review.
That's, that's fine, but as long as not three of us working on it at the same time, I, I don't think it'll constitute a meeting, you know, just to be a committee, they won't. But I, I strongly suggest that either way, it'd be fine. What do you think, Eric? What's the best way? I'm sorry, Mr. Langson, what do you think?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, can you repeat that question?
So is it improper for it not to go through Sandra first and let, or is it very proper to allow District 1 and District 5 commissioners consult and then submit it?
Yeah, for them to collaborate and then work with Sandra is fine.
Okay, that's fine. We can do it. We'll do it that way, Mr. Yancey, to make, save some work and we'll get together on it there.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I, just to clarify, so, but are we gonna leave it, you know, sort of open that other, if other commissioners have conditions they wish to submit, they would send it to me or communicate with one of the other two?
No, they will send it to you, and any other three commissioners will send it to you by 1:00 on Monday.
Okay.
And then you'll get all of it out back to all of us by 4:00 on Thursday. So that gives you Tuesday, Wednesday, to get it to Mr. Langson. If, so if he sees the issue when it comes back to us, he, he, he may be able to correspond on it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may make a motion that, that kind of captures that. First of all, Hutch, I'll still send you my stuff tomorrow, and you can do what you want with it. But I'd like to make a motion to defer to the next Planning Commission meeting with the understanding that commission members are to send any proposed conditions to Sandra by 1:00 PM on Monday, and that Sandra would then consolidate the comments and return them to the commissioners by Thursday at 4:00 PM.
Okay. All in favor to say aye?
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second. It's okay. It's been seconded. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seems like it passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna take a 15-minute break. So my watch says 7:30.
Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks has a quick question.
Yes.
This is for Brooke again. I'm sorry, I just, are we, and I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm gonna ask it anyway. You told me to be quiet, but, um, is it, are we gonna be able to see what, what you guys are thinking about attaching to the SUP before the next meeting?
It, it'll be presented to you in a timely fashion. You won't get the work copy, but you'll get the final copy, yes.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure how that was gonna work.
Yeah, well, well,
Thank you, sir.
Just work, whoever's your liaison, work with Mrs. Thornton, and she's very competent and very expeditious, and she'll take care of you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
We're gonna be in recess for 15 minutes from 7:30 to 7:45. We got a couple more things to go, but we need to take a break because we've been going along for an hour and a half. Mr. Lambert, if you, oh, if you would shut, set it down for that time, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Lambert? Who's for the county, who's doing it for the county today?
Mr. Cole Shiflett.
Cole Shiflett, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Shiflett, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that a former Orange County student and recent graduate of George Mason University is, is the person shutting down our meeting.
Oh, good. That's a good thing.
If he shuts this down, do we have to, do we have to log back in?
Oh, you don't, I can put up a slide for the brief recess.
That's right.
That, that'll be it.
Let it stay there.
Yep.
Thank you.
You can stay in, and I'm just gonna share my screen, and that's what's gonna be up.
All right, that sounds good. All right, that sounds good.
Oh, good grief.
Hey, uh, Cole, are you there? Is anyone online?
I'm still here, yep.
Hey, uh, is there any way to shut the audio down? I mean, you guys.
Yeah, they don't.
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to mute.
They don't know their mics are on.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Brooks, your audio is on. Well, it's up to them. I've done my best to warn them.
Okay, folks, do we have everybody back? Nope, not yet. Now we're getting them back.
Donald, as we wait for everybody to log back in, I just wanted to add a friendly reminder is that as we draft conditions for this S U P, uh, all of those documents would be foilable.
Right, and um, that's kind of why I was trying to forward them to Ms. Thornton. Also, I think we neglected to pick the next meeting date for this. We we said that when we would get everything back, but I don't know what the calendar shows. So I'm going to try to get Ms. Thornton to tell us what to do for that, too.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a question for Mr. Lansing.
Yes, Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay, well, let's get let's get back on before we go too far here.
I can't get my audio on here.
I, oh, your audio is on. I just can't get my picture up for some reason.
My picture, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't either for some reason.
Says the host has control of me.
Yeah, bless their heart. They better turn you loose, huh?
Uh huh. All these bits.
Uh, Mr. Capel, you back? Mr. Jancy, are you back?
Yes, sir, I'm right here, Mr. Brooks.
All right, Mr. Brooks is back. Ms. Zilmaker, you back?
Yes, I'm here.
Good. Mr. Hutchinson, are you good now?
I'm good, I just need to ask a question.
All right, uh, Mr. Capel, are you back? He may be muted, let me see.
Yeah, he is muted.
He is muted, yeah.
He's muted, I see his mouth going. Jason, I believe you're muted.
I am officially un unmuted.
All right, we want to call the commission back into session. Um, Mr. Hutchinson, you have a question for?
For Mr. Lansing, yes. Uh, by law, Eric, are these folks considered disabled? And if so, are there any conditions to the S U P that we need to consider?
Uh, no, I do not believe they are considered disabled.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioners, I don't think we put this to off to another date. Ms. Thornton, what are you suggesting?
Well, I I'm sorry I didn't ask you the question while they were still on because I wasn't at. Mr. Capel had asked at one point about whether or not the commission wanted to um, begin meeting twice monthly or at least perhaps have another meeting this month. Um, if if you were inclined to meet again this month, that date would be March eighteenth. If you don't uh, want to, you know, if the decision is not to meet on that reserved Thursday, then the next regular meeting date is April first.
I'm not sure the eighteenth is going to be enough time of what the timers, what we gave you to make sure everything gets around everybody and back and taken care of. Because it's going to have to loop back around after it gets to the commissioners. He's got to loop back if they have something, so. So let's go to the first commissioners. Would you take a suggestion to take us to the first Thursday in April?
I have no problem unless there's a time crunch associated with this SUP.
I don't think so.
I hadn't, I hadn't checked the calendar. I don't think we have the 100-day issue if we do that.
Okay, okay. All right, and if it is, then we can fix that by the 18th meeting if we have to. So let's go to first Thursday, April is April the?
It's the first, it's actually the first.
Oh, boy, April 1st, we'll take it. We shall take it. All right. Now we go to rezoning. Twenty-one dash zero one, Hopon Enterprises LLC has applied to rezone property at 12731 Gordon Avenue, Gordonville, Virginia, from the general residential R2 to the agricultural District A in order to cultivate crop, so pick your own operation to craft a brewery, farm, winery, and recreational space. The property is identified as tax map parcel 68A12117181239404168A2 that's two, that's 23, 42, 43, 44, 45, and town suburban. And 68, I'm sorry, 123, that's 46. The property contains approximately 68 acres and is situated in the town suburban recommended for future land use category as described in the Orange Comprehensive Plan. Are the applicants on board?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to you in just a second here. Ms. Thornton, you can go ahead, and then we will ask the applicants, and then we'll move on from there.
All right. Would you, would you like me to review the whole staff report, or?
No, I don't think that's necessary. We got it. Just hit us the highlights and, and, you know, give us a quick briefer, but enough to generate the questions if they have any.
Okay, well, I guess I will start then with the, the staff recommendation, which is that we, the staff supports the, the concept that's been presented in this application and recommends approval as a conditional rezoning based upon the proffers that the applicants submitted, which would restrict the agricultural uses that could be permitted on the property. I did want to note that in order for the applicants to conduct agritourism uses on the property, which would be not all that they plan to do, but it's a component of their proposal. They do have to demonstrate that they are a bona fide farm, generating a minimum of $1,000 annually from the sale of agricultural products that were produced on the property. That area is, I'm sure everyone's familiar with. I mean, it's, it's currently a mix of residential and agricultural uses. There's open space in the vicinity, and the site is approximately a half mile from the strip shopping center in the town of Gordonville where the, the food line is located.
Okay. We will ask whoever the applicant is if they would state your name, address, and your affiliation with the property, and have your comments now. We actually limit them to 10 to 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Jonathan Craig. I'm at 723 Orangdale Avenue in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm co-owner of this project with my business partner, Andre Xavier, who I'd love to introduce now, Andre.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andre Xavier. I'm also co-owner of Hopon Enterprises with John. I'm located here at 1591 Delphi Lane in Charlottesville, Virginia. I guess, John, do you want to go ahead and start your?
Yeah, so for those of you that we haven't already met or spoken to, I'm from Gordonville, was born and raised on Doctor's Road, just over the county line in Louisa County. This project is a true homecoming for me, and I'm excited to bring the knowledge and experience that Andre and I have gained through our professional careers back to Gordonville. We've already made a few adjustments to our concept plan based on what we've heard from some of the committee and some of the landowners that we've already spoken with. And before we, you know, take any of your questions, if you did have any, I did want to mention two quick things that, why it wasn't specifically addressed in our plan, we will of course be monitoring our property for trash, debris, and potential crime. The natural aspect of the area is one of our largest focal points of the property, and we aim to keep it that way. The forest and our walking trails will, will absolutely stay in their glory. Our head brewer, who makes not only quality craft beer, he also happens to be a registered forester, and his previous career was as a forester for the state of Virginia. So we hope to bring his knowledge and experience to keeping that, and keeping and encouraging that a healthy forest. And in regards to the barriers that some had mentioned, as far as the walking trails and neighboring properties, there is a 60-foot buffer of a paper road that we cannot build on, that the neighbors cannot build on, that would act as a natural barrier. And if anyone has tried to walk back there, it's, the boggy conditions would also provide a natural barrier so that we don't have folks walking off the trail. They step into two or three feet of, of water in some places. I also want to mention, there was talk of the dark sky lights with any new additions of lighting. Same thing with the forest, you know, the, the dark, sorry, the starlight of Orange County is one of the things that drew us there. We don't have any plans, and we'd be happy to put it into writing that all of our lighting fixtures that we do add will be either waist level or ground level, and any of the existing lights that we do retrofit will be dark sky compliant. And in regards to the entrance and exits, I think they had mentioned that, that we wanted to be suitable based on the agritourism standards. And so we're working with SHIMP Engineering to try to find the best way to maneuver our entrance so that we allow for that 50-foot radius coming off of the road. And VDOT has already said that we are not in need of a turn lane as long as the agritourism entrance can be established and fit those requirements. Those are things I wanted to make sure that we had touched on. If you all have any other questions, or if Andre wants to mention anything, feel free to.
Actually, I just want to thank you, the planning commission and staff, for your time and support. We feel very welcome in Orange County, so thank you for that. We hope that our application has conveyed in our ideas and projects. And if you have any questions, now's the time to ask us, we're here, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you all. Commissioners, any questions? Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr.
This is George Nancy. One question. Is there any particular reason why you gentlemen are only asking for rezoning of six acres and not the entire parcel?
It's between 9.5 acres. We're not, we were told that the, the town limits would have their own hearing. And so in order to be able to get our loan approved in the timeframe that we have, instead of doing the county and the Gordonville at the same time, our plan is to extend, God willing, that we get this agricultural shift over, that we would extend that to the other parcels if the, the town wanted us to.
Thank you. Mr. Capel?
Yes, um, hey, guys. Welcome to the Planning Commission. It was good meeting with you. I saw the letter from the town, which, which is good that they're supportive. And, you know, we, we talked about it, and I've, so I've reviewed your plan. So I just, I have one question on, there was the one property owner that, that did mention the crime and trash. Are you gonna, how are you gonna delineate the, the property line there between? And I can just tell you from experience, I, I share a fence line with Horton Vineyards, and, and I do on occasion find the fence helpful.
So they're, they're, of course, no, I understand, and I assume you mean the, the neighbors that would have folks directly walking from our site? Or is this someone that had mentioned from the, the trails? Because from the plan, we were told that was comments from, I wasn't sure that was from a neighbor, but from the council.
Well, yeah, I don't, my, I mean, just reading the, the letter, it, you know, it's, I hadn't really thought about it, but those homes right there.
The one adjacent to where the flagpole is, if you're able to see those pictures as examples, there is already existing fence, and the plan is to use that in any way that we can to help create more barriers. But we're installing our own pasture-style black farm fencing that you're familiar with for our parking lot. So no one could, and we'll have proper signage through our parking lot as well as the rest of the property. You know, private property, do not cross, stay on the trails.
Okay, just, so there is like a delineation of, you're, you're talking about a, there is a fence existing between you and those, those homes there on the front, that front.
If you're looking at the building to the left, there is already a fence.
It's a chain-linked fence, or any place, yeah.
Well, I'm talking to the right there.
To the right, there is a.
Facing the building to the right, yeah.
There is an existing chain-linked fence, but that's kind of in the middle of the property, and, and the overhead look, overhead view of our property, that fence line is, it's not gonna be the same fence, but that fence line is gonna move to the midpoint of the paper road that exists now. Part of our plan is also to remove that paper road in between us and the neighbors so that 30 feet in the paper road, we would take the, our side of the 30 feet, and then the other 30 feet would be in addition to their current property. So there's enough of a buffer there, and with the addition of a, like I said, that farm fence, I think people will get the idea that it's not a, you know, it's a private residence.
Yeah, I, I've, I've been here for, on my property for, and I just have a, a, a normal cattle fence, and I've only had one person climb the fence in all my years here, so. And I had another person think that my dogs were lost and, and tried to pick my dogs up and bring them over to Horton Vineyards. And luckily, I had a phone number on the collar, and they called me to tell me my dog was lost. And, and I had to go tell them that they removed my dog from my property. Put it over at Horton, but, okay, just as long as there's a, a, just, just to be clear, there is like a delineation. It's, it's obviously not human proof, but people who are on your property will definitely know where the property line is of the existing properties.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's really the only question I had.
Any other commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, did, do you, did you all consider putting vegetation along those fence lines to further buffer?
Yes, sir, we do have plans to put trees on that particular property to the right side of the property to increase noise and visual pollution, let's call it a way, but yes.
Okay, and what kind of signage are you gonna use on 231 to advertise the?
Well, the, the current sign is actually being removed, so the, yeah, it's keeping that sign. So it's not going to be electronic sign, I can tell you that. So we're still having to decide on the materials, but most likely it'll be something wood or just a traditional business sign within compliance of this, the size.
In a similar location of the existing sign. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
You good? Any other commissioner? I neglected also, Mr. Johnson, I know you on board, but yeah, I didn't ask you in the last one, do you have anything you want to say? I apologize.
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, not at all.
Okay. I don't have any questions as, as we look at this SUP. A request for zoning.
Trying to get your attention.
Who is?
George Nancy.
Go ahead, Mr. Yancey, I'm sorry.
Uh, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
On the package that we received on the February 18th meeting that got postponed, on page seven or 12, there's a picture of the southwest side of the existing main structure.
Yes, sir.
My question to the applicant, you see a nice white pole sticking up there?
Yes, sir, the, the pipeline, we were in the most recent comprehensive overhead plan that was added by SHIMP Engineering. I believe that is sheet.
Well, my question, question is, you, you've got 11 parking spaces according to your schematic that you presented. Mike, in stopping there today on my way trip to Charlottesville, that's a gas pipeline, line, utility line. How are you gonna put parking over the top of a, a gas utility line?
That area is gonna be employee parking, and the, in all fairness, our, and our engineering company that did the site plan for us, we had mentioned that we wanted to have employee, and they drew it to spec and to code as if we needed to have it for customers. So that 20-foot space between the, the building and where the parking spots will be adjusted. We'd be more than happy to have them make a, an adjustment to the official site plan to accentuate that, but there would be.
My follow-up question then is, it shows a, a reference to 24 feet between the, I assume that's the sidewalk that goes by the building, and you've got a side door entrance there on that side as well. Is 24 feet adequate to park a car and back a car out?
Uh, that's a good question, and I've allowed my engineers to, to tell us the, the truth behind it. I would say no personally, but.
But actually, that's a good point, because, yeah, that's a good point. Actually, that could be our motorcycle parking lot, right? So we can put bikes in there.
Bicycle, not.
Either that or utility vehicle of some kind, it's real small.
No, thank you for putting that up, Mr. Yancey.
Hard time, I'm just seeing.
No, I, we appreciate that, that's why we're here. If we knew it all.
It'd make a whole lot of sense to me. That's all I have, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Yancey. Is there any other questions or comments? So then I solicit a motion to approve or deny.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Brooks, real quick?
Sure.
The fine folks have offered some proffers voluntarily. Do we want to accept those proffers as offered, or do we modify them or deny them?
Um, I assumed, maybe that's not a good thing to do. I assume that if we approve it, we will be accepting those proffers.
Correct.
We're not asking for them, they offer them. I assume we'd be accepting them. Mr. Lansing, what's your thought on that?
Just to clarify, you're asking whether the motion without specification would by default incorporate the proffers that were accepted? That, that were used by the applicant?
Right.
Yeah, I, I believe it would without the specification, but it certainly couldn't hurt just to, just out of an abundance of caution, to move to accept, to prove that by the applicant.
Go again.
Okay. I believe that a motion that doesn't specify would by default be interpreted to include the conditions that were proffered by the applicant, but it certainly couldn't help, it certainly couldn't hurt, rather, out of an abundance of caution if that's what you intend to move to adopt the SUP with the conditions that were proffered by the applicant.
And, and this is a rezoning, just, just for clarification.
I'm sorry, the rezoning.
Okay, so if, whoever, if it's approved, we can just say, uh, we recommend approval as submitted with the proffer. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, that's what I said.
Okay, then I solicit a motion to approve or deny.
So moved.
It's been moved, do second it.
Hold, hold on, what did, what did he move to do? To approve or deny?
Approved.
Did I make them, did I make the motion, Mr. Hutchinson?
You may do so, Mr. Capel.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as presented with the addition of the conditions that they, that they proffered.
And I will second that.
Okay, roll call for that, please, Ms. Thornton.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, did I miss something? Has the public hearing for this already been held?
This, this was the public hearing. And I did want to point out, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman and, and others in attendance, that we didn't receive any public comment on this matter. You know, the, the meeting where the public hearing was to have been opened was February 18. And that was, was how it had been advertised and the meeting was canceled because of the weather conditions. Because our advertisement for that meeting indicated that the planning commission intended to take action on this date, March 4th. Our legal staff opined that it would be acceptable to open the public hearing, consider any public comment that might have been received and close the public hearing. But we, we didn't receive any, any written comment.
Right, so that, did that answer your question, Mr. Johnson?
It was an answer to my question, yes.
Okay.
Hey, Chairman, Chairman Brooks.
Yes.
Do, I mean, to Mr. Johnson's point, I mean, do we need to open? I hadn't even really thought about it. I, I just assumed that we got the public comments through the last meeting.
I didn't have any comments and I didn't, well, here's why I didn't do that. Maybe I should, but it doesn't, I'll go back and do it. But we had made an announcement at the beginning of our meeting that there would be no public comment for this meeting. Those things would have to been in writing. We'd already had not received any, so I'm on the assumption that we have no public comments and we move on. But maybe for, for procedural purposes, I guess we open and close public comment and state that maybe that, that will clarify.
Chairman Brooks, I, I mean, we did actually receive some comments, right? I mean, we got a letter from the town, I saw the comment from the, the landowner, you know, asking about the, the fence and the protection. So I, I'm not trying to argue with you, but I mean, we did receive some, some comments and we did receive some feedback.
I must have missed those lines because I don't have it.
Well, if we didn't receive individual letters, those comments and, and, and I had thought to make this clarification when you were asking the questions, Mr. Capell, about the demarcation of property lines so that people couldn't leave the trails. That, that kind of comment and inquiry came through the sheriff. And the, the, the letters that you received were all comments from the application review committee.
Right, and the, the one from the economic development office is internal, so I don't consider that a comment.
Well, the one from VDOT is a comment.
Well, it is a comment, yeah.
That's it, well, but I consider VDOT and all of them standard procedure. But let's do this, let's do this to clear it up. So we will receive all the public comment that we have received by mail and acknowledge that we have received some, both from the county and from a particular citizen. But there's no public comment that's going to be stated tonight. It will go into record as the previous public hearing was done. And now we will close that part of it after saying that, acknowledging that there is public comment, if we will. And now we'll move toward the motion that's on the floor, which basically says we will approve the applicant's request for rezoning of 21-01 and receive the applicant's proffer.
Now we should have cleared up all of that. If, if I may, just before your vote, just, just as one additional piece of information, the advertised deadline in our legal ad for, for this matter, the advertised deadline for the receipt of public comment was February 23rd. And so the comments that we, the comments that you have in your package were, were from the application review committee. We, we had received some inquiries from property owners for information, but I don't believe we received any written comment from members of the general public. The comments that we received were solicited from the application review committee.
Okay, thank you. That gives more clarity to it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm, I'm so sorry to do this, I, like, or, I, I feel like we're doing this one differently than we've done the others and, and, and I don't, while I, I like the project and you know, I just made a motion to approve it, I don't like that we're doing something different. And, and what's different is we usually have this meeting and we give the public, you know, we have this presentation that everyone sees on video and then we allow time for the public comment. And so I'm just wondering if, if we should plan on, you know, having our 18th meeting and, and giving a little bit of period just to make sure we get the public comments and treat this the way we've treated all the others. Cause I, what I don't like, I just don't like that this one's different. And, and I feel out of fairness to the community that, that, that might be something we, we would want to consider doing.
The, the problem with your suggestion that I see is that we would have to re-advertise for that comment. And then that comment then would come in after we've already advertised for the comment. I guess your, your concern is that the public didn't hear the applicant's side before they could say anything. But here's what typically happens when we're not in Zoom meetings. We typically have the county to go, the applicant to go, and then the public come right up then. And it's not a time distance for them to do it. So, but we gave them time for this comment. The public would know at that particular time if we were doing it in, with the, in person hearing that you need to be here that night to say it. You didn't get a week after it. We've kind of done a little bit different, given them more time. So I hear what you're saying, but I think in this case, considering, this is probably something that, if, if, if Orange County ever, Orange County citizens know what they want to comment on. I'll say it that way, with everything that they do and they hear it and they see it and they comment on it and they know what they want to do. The comment I heard on this when I was walking the site was they were glad somebody was doing something with it. Um, so, but.
Well, let, let me leave it at this, Mr. Chairman.
Where are we at legally?
So legally, you, you have a lot of options and you can, you can follow Jason's recommendation if you would like, or you can take a vote today. Normally what we have been doing is the, is the holding the public hearing open and, and then taking a vote after the first meeting at which the matter is discussed. And that's one of the options that's been opened up by the continuity of government ordinance. Um, the continuity of government ordinance was then amended to create a second option, uh, which allows you to take care of it all in one meeting. Uh, and so you, you just, you have either option. You can, you can go ahead and, and vote tonight, or you can continue this out and vote later.
Eric, we've had a valid public comment period, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll, I'll stick with my motion, but I'll, for the record, I would encourage anyone in the, in the public, anyone who's watched this video, there, there is another pub, public comment period before the board of supervisors. And I, I'll publicly, uh, just say that, you know, we, this is a little different than the ones we've done in the past. There, there's no malintent behind it. And I would encourage anyone watching this to, to go ahead and send your comments in for the, the supervisors' hearing. That, that would be my proposal, Mr. Chairman Brooks. And then my motion would stand as, as, as I presented.
Okay, thank you, sir. No further. We'll move on to the roll call for the vote. The roll call will be for the motion that's on the floor that states we will approve the applicant's request for rezoning and accept the proffers.
And, and then, and you're recommending approval.
They recommended approval.
Um, Mr. Capell.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Yancy. Ms. Zillmaker.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry, I was trying to, I missed you, okay? Mr. Hutchinson.
Hi.
Uh, unanimous, intended for approval with the conditions as proffered by the applicants. Following Mr. Capell's comment about potential submission of comments for the board's public hearing, the board of supervisors has scheduled their hearing for March 9th, which is Tuesday evening. So that, that will be coming up on Tuesday. They will be receiving, county administration will be receiving, you know, and act an update from your meeting. They'll get that information tomorrow.
Uh, Ms. Thornton, generally, what, what is their schedule for receiving public comments?
Um, I'd, I'd have to double check the ad, but I think typically it's, it's how we had been operating pre-COVID. Whereby comments were accepted up until the day before the meeting.
Okay, just for the video, just anyone who wants to submit comments, the board is ready to receive them.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to agenda item number 5D, that's S U P 2101. William Renaud has applied for special use permit to operate a livestock slaughtering and processing facility on the property owned by Knight Cattle Park, located at 15415 James Madison Highway. The property is owned General Industrial, identified in tax map, parcel 5734. It contains 25.73 acres. The property is situated in the economic development, recommended future land use category, subscribed in the Orange County Comprehensive Plan. I'll say as we start this, Mr. Renaud, we appreciate your patience. Um, but we're asking Mrs. Thornton to go forward and then we'll ask you to come forward, sir.
Um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as, as staff has deferred making a definitive recommendation on this matter until we receive a, a bit more information concerning the potential for noise and odor. And the, the deferral is primarily based on allowing some time for consideration of conditions that might be appropriately attached to the special use permit. Um, the characteristics of this property, including its historic use as a livestock market, that tend to lend themselves very well to the proposed use.
Okay, Mr. Renaud, are you on board?
Mr. Renaud, you're muted.
You're still muted.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah, um, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, sir, you are. Thank you guys for your time tonight. So the, uh, the special use permit is specifically for the slaughtering of animals. Processing of the animals is a by right use under the industrial zoning of this property. Uh, we submitted our special use permit. It allows us to participate in V D A's and U S B A's regulations as far as governing the processing of animals for resale, which is important to our agricultural business in Orange County currently. If you're not familiar with the stress and, uh, demand on that service, uh, the local processing plants that are U S B A and V D A's approved are booked for all of 2021, um, which has denied our local producers the ability to have their animals processed and process in a means under V D A's inspection to allow them to do wholesale and resale. I'm a producer myself, uh, I have a, a label under Carrington Farms. And seeing the stress that was put on the industry during COVID and the emphasis of many consumers wanting to know where their animals came from and, and understanding the process and the humane treatment of the animals. Uh, this is something that we think that county needs and it supports the county producers and, and the local counties producers. We are requesting the special use because of the zoning regulations when they were put in place in the eighties or nineties. Specifically out, uh, excluded animal slaughtering. Um, animal processing is a by right use, but the slaughtering of the animal is not. Um, it was specifically excluded. There is a big stereotype with the processing of animals. And to answer some of the questions that I, I know just from being in the industry, uh, we are zero impact to the community or the infrastructure of Orange County. Um, all byproducts of animal harvesting is contained and it's actually taken off site by Valley Protein. So no carcasses, no hides, no, no fats, no byproducts. Nothing is put into the landfill, nothing is put into the ground. The, uh, the only thing that, uh, is put into the environment is the liquid protein from the harvesting of animals, which has already been approved by Orange County and a environmental engineer. We, we think this is hand in hand with the current use of the property with the livestock market. It, uh, it gives them a lot of flexibility as far as when they have their larger cattle sales and animals are lame or injured or cold. We're allowed to, you know, process those animals to, to give the producer a, a product instead of taking it back. We think it's a win-win. We tried this in Louisa County, it was unsuccessful. Uh, Orange County Development reached out to us and, and started this communication with Ms. Horton that, you know, we went down these roads and decided that with the special. that, uh, you know, we went down these roads and decided that with the special use permit. The, and in the end, the special use permit only pertains to the slaughtering of animals. We are not a tannery, we are not uh, the stereotypes with animal processing and tanneries and the odors and noise. This, that does not pertain to um, the, these animals. We fall under VDAC and USDA as far as the humane treatment of animals. We have to qualify as a one-shot. To put it bluntly, we are a one-shot facility, which means we take particular care to make sure that when the animal is harvested, it is done as humanely as possible. From that point, the only thing that goes in the ground or in the environment in any capacity is a liquid protein. And again, we already have the environmental engineer that says our existing subject and uh, subject field and everything else can handle that small amount of liquid protein. Everything else is captured, barreled, and either is a product to the customer or is taken off by Valley Protein. Uh, as far as concerns about smell and noise. Um, this is a perfect fit for what we're trying to do with the Orange County Livestock. They obviously have an existing working paddock and, and um, uh, corral system that allows us to take animals and keep them with food and water until they are harvested. Uh, I know that Mr. Capel has talked about um, limitations or clarifications on our special use permit, which we're open to. But we are looking at a capacity of 10 to 15 animals a week. Um, VDAC and the existing traffic through the property is below any of their permitted abilities. So we, we don't see any uh, conflict or issue as far as traffic into the facility. Our setbacks are, you know, we're on 26 acres. We have a very, you know, a, a very good buffer. But again, the emphasis is uh, zero impact and humane treatment of the animals.
Okay, any commissioners have any questions?
What is liquid protein?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Hutchison.
To put it bluntly, liquid protein is the blood.
Yeah, I, um, this Jim Hutchison, I, I used to live up in Colorado Springs next to the Monford meat manufacturing plant up there.
Yeah, sir.
The smell that you could get was rather odorous. But what was more interesting was in the pens. When you pen up cattle, you feed them, they have feces and urine. And those uh, those need to be captured somewhere. In fact, Monford used to take the uh, byproducts, dehydrate them and make tile out of them. Of course, the tile color didn't look too good, but what, what is your plan for capturing the, the waste products of live cattle? So it doesn't contaminate?
So with the livestock market and their existing ability to operate on a weekly or daily basis. That processant, or that uh, livestock market is operating on a one to five times a year cattle sale. We don't feel that the feces or, or uh, byproducts of the animals that we're processing comes close to their existing permitted use.
Yeah, but the urine and feces both go into the ground. Uh, or they flow down when it rains or into whatever water table we have.
Yes, sir. The animals that are dropped off for processing will never, ever be there for more than 24 hours. So the impact of 10 to 15 cows a week on a livestock market that is already permitted. It seems that, that, that's not a measurable amount compared to what they are allowed to produce under their zoning already.
So you, you really have no plan, it just goes into the ground? And there's no collection?
No, sir. There, there is no collection. However, again, we're, we are not talking about a thousand or a hundred. We are talking about 10 to 15 animals a week that are harvested that day.
Well, I'm not an expert, so I, I appreciate it, thanks.
Hey, um, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I see, I see Mr. Yancy has some questions.
That's all right, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Capel.
Um, so, Mr. Renaud, could you, so currently, uh, it's permitted as a livestock facility. Like what's, what, what do you, like normally, like as it's permitted now, how many, how many animals could you have on the property?
Uh, not to, uh, not that I have an exact answer to what they're permitted. However, as a, as a livestock market with no restrictions, they are permitted to have a sale every day if they chose to.
So would it be, would it be hundreds or, you know, could, could they? And I, I'm just trying to illustrate your point that, 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 you know, um, you're going to have less animals there than, way less than what could be allowed.
So Derek, and again, uh, to your point, that they are an existing livestock market and, and everyone from Orange County remembers the day that they had a livestock auction every week. Um, they don't currently operate under that. Knight Cattle Company bought the property to facilitate their operations. And the cattle sales are in the three to five times a year. Um, we're assisting the Knight Cattle Company, obviously, and we're generating revenue for them and with our facility. But uh, I don't think we're, we're not coming close to any expectation of a livestock market. Um, they, again, they are having a sale three to five times a year. Um, and we're talking about 10 to 15 head a week of processing. Which is a very, very small volume.
And then just, could you describe, uh, just really quick, the, the sort of animals, uh, how they're raised? And, and just a little bit about your, your farm and, and the sort of animals that you're expecting to harvest there?
So we're focusing on local producers. I am a local producer. I, I uh, take beef through USDA inspected facilities and sell it at livestock and to restaurants. And what we have found with this pandemic is that uh, the larger producers have bought up all available um, processing dates. Uh, for example, the closest processor to us in Orange County is Falkirasina. And they will not even take a date in 2021. So these local farmers in our community have no ability to get a product to a state inspected facility and get it to market. And it is hurting all of us.
And just to reiterate, I mean, you're a, you're a small local producer. You pasture raise, is that right?
Uh, no, sir. I, I, I do grain finish and, and everything from me, uh, everything from me goes through Glen Burnie Farms, which is the Biscos who own property in Spotsy in Orange County. Um, but besides my production, um, we are talking with renewed uh, Renew Pastures and Wild Hill and Dragonfly. We have many, many, many producers that are very interested in, in us getting the state inspected. Um, besides the special use that allows us to slaughter the animals on the property. Um, everything else would fall under VDAC inspection and USDA. Um, currently, the closest USDA inspected processing plant to anybody in Orange County is about 62 miles to Falkirasina. And again, they're booked for all of 2021. That's all I've got, Mr.
Is there any other questions? George, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Ali, I, I, I'm not sure you're correct on there's not another processor. Are you familiar with Rollins Beef Processing?
Yes, sir, I am.
Aren't they still in business?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay.
How, however.
They're 10 miles away.
No, sir. They are not a state inspected processing plant.
Uh, would you say they processed meat for the last 50 years?
Sir, I'm not going to argue with you about Rollins.
I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to point out that they have been a processor of meat. I've used them myself, I knew other.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the other members of the commission. Uh, there are enough pens at the livestock market to hold up probably over 200 head of cattle. The last big sale we had there was the Rossin Families Special Law Livestock. Um, and I'm not sure how many head the Rossin sold, but you know, it was fairly substantial. Normally sit between 100 and 150 head at that auction. Um, another question that Mr. Hutchison asked about the waste byproduct. Normally, in those markets, uh, if you go to the livestock market at Madison, you will find that they either use sawdust, shavings or straw to absorb um, feces as well as urine. And then they take that and have it either given to farmers to put out on the land uh, as um, additional fertilizer for the property. So there is a potential runoff, but it's very nominal in that reference.
Um, I.
Main questions I have for you, in looking at your schematics of your drawing. You're saying you're going to take the existing restaurant area and convert it to a processing area. Uh, as you're aware of, meat has to be aged before it's cut up in, into product. Uh, I didn't see any indication of refrigeration areas for that purpose.
All right, so I will address your first question. Uh, Rollins was grandfathered in to the zoning. So uh, they are not an inspected processing plant. They are not VDAC and they are not USDA. They are a exempt under the uh, grandfather law. They are exempt not for resale. So yes, sir, I'm very familiar with Rollins and I have, I have meat in my freezer from them. We are not uh, applying for a special use. They have been grandfathered in and are allowed to slaughter animals under their grandfather. But they are not VDAC or state inspected. They are state exempt from the grandfather clause. So nobody goes in to Rollins and asks where their byproducts are going, where their carcasses are going, where their liquid protein are going. We are applying for the slaughter, that's what we're applying for, is the special use to allow animal slaughtering. And in that special use, we are going to be under VDAC inspection. Not a custom exempt to VDAC's expense, uh, inspection, which is what Rollins operates under. Second question.
I didn't, I'm not questioning your point of view here. I'm questioning that, that is an existing business that has been, like you said, exempt because of historical background. Um, and I can almost tell you, when the Orange County Fair Association and the Louisa Agricultural Fair have their annual uh, shows and sale of cattle and pigs and sheep and whatever.
Right.
They mainly handle all of that processing for people in that right, because it is the only one. And I, I'm glad to hear this gentleman say he's coming uh, to do this. Uh, it's a need, and I'm not here to question, there's not a need. Uh, the only thing I'm concerned with is making sure that, you know, this is done right from the beginning and not after the fact.
I understand that, sir. And, and what I'm trying to stress in this um, is that everything we do falls under state inspection. That is what, that is what we're applying for. We are going to start off as a custom exempt USDA operating under the same regulations as Rollins. That, when that is not grandfathered in and you go into that uh, standard and operate under those standards, you immediately fall under VDAC state inspected if everything is correct. And our goal, unlike Rollins or any of the other local processors, and, and they all have their place and their value in our community. Um, our goal is to allow local producers to process their meat at our facility. And it can be for resale. That is, when I said the only place local is Falkirasina, that is because we are applying for a state inspection that allows us to stamp our producers and they can resale in the state of Virginia.
Anyone else?
What was, what was the um, the response to the refrigeration?
Uh, so uh, on our site plan, we have a 30 by 40 uh, plat laid out beside the existing structures. And that structure is our uh, walk-in cooler and freezer space. Which also gets approved by VDAC. It has to be impervious to moisture, varmints and insects. They have a long list in their CFR that, that, that it's, it's all part of the harvesting of the animals. But the animal is brought in, it is harvested, it is collected, and it is taken to the walk-in cooler. To answer Mr. Yancy's question, that is on that plat as the um, the new pad construction beside the facility. I didn't go into definition of that construction because my understanding was it didn't fall under the, the purview of this application.
Any further, Ms. Zillmaker?
Mr. Brooks, one other que- how many full-time and part-time employees are you looking at for this facility?
Uh, we currently have three full-time employees. We are already currently operating in Louisa under the. We are already currently operating in Louisa under the USDA exemption. Um, and we expect that to be a, around four to six full-time employees.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Thornton, we have to put this up for public comment or did?
Yes, yes, we do. And the comment period um was advertised to extend to March twenty-third with the, your anticipated um action on April first.
Okay. So we just need to continue this until April the first with the comment ending uh, March the twenty-third uh as previously notified?
Yes, sir.
I'll solicit a motion for that.
A, a motion to, so, Mr. Chairman, you've, you've opened a public hearing and now you're looking for a motion to defer until one April?
That, that's right.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make that motion.
To be in by April, by, sorry, by March the twenty-third.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we defer um until one April uh with um the, the public comment period being open until March twenty-third.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's second. Someone in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All appears to be unanimous. Thank you so much for, Nod, you understand those dates, public comments till the twenty-third. Then we will hopefully vote on, on April one.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Okay. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is a work session, which is none. Uh, old business, which is none. And Mr. Johnson, you up with supervisor reporting, you have one?
Uh, I don't really have a report, Mr. Chairman. I, I do wanna uh, uh, circle back to the question that was asked of Sandra earlier about the board uh accepting comment. Uh, the way the board has been doing this, even though we have in-person meetings, we, we've sort of stayed with the, with the, with the written public comment. And we will, so we will, on, on Tuesday night, there'll be a presentation by the applicants. We'll open the public comment and that will go through until our next meeting, which will be on the twenty-third. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that that's how the board has been handling that. So anybody who wanted to comment on the, on the uh application from earlier, uh, they will be able to see the presentation at the board level uh on YouTube and then they'll have uh basically two weeks or thirteen days to, to enter a comment. That's all I have.
Thank you for your attendance and thank you for that um clarity. Uh, Ms. Thornton, you have a report for us or?
Um, well, I have a couple of things and, and I'd like, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson too. I think I, I was not, and, and I've certainly been through the experience um with, with some of the matters we've had before them um in the past uh couple of months where they do have their public hearing and then it is open till their following meeting two weeks later. Um, so I apologize for um misleading information that I may have conveyed. Um, I'd like to introduce to you guys, um, and Julie, uh, not all guys, um, Josh Gillespie, who is, is with us uh this evening. He's, he's been on uh for, for the meeting, entire meeting. Um, Josh is the newly hired Director of Planning and Development Services and he will begin working officially on Monday. So Josh, uh, let's see, there he is. Um, and Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether you'd like to say something next or if Josh would like to comment.
Well, hang on just, hang on just a sec. Josh, could you hear the introduction?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman Brooks, thank you very much. Uh, Sandra, Mrs. Thornton, thank you very much for your, your introduction.
Well, you got to see how we kind of do things. If you want to perfect it, jump in here. If you, you were. Good luck to that perfecting and correcting though. We welcome aboard, we, we certainly been anticipating this, they can see to be filmed. Uh, Sandra does a phenomenal job for us, um, and has done a phenomenal job. And my best advice to you is uh lean to her for what has been going on and the character of the commission. And we welcome your board and you certainly can let us know if we can do something to help you. And certainly if we can tidy it up or make it easier, let us know that also.
Thank you, Chairman Brooks, uh, members of the Planning Commission, Supervisor Johnson. Um, thank you for your service. These uh night meetings can be thankless, um, so thank you for that. Supervisor Johnson, thank you to your uh welcome to me this evening. I do look forward to working with you, with the administration, the members of the community in Orange County. I heard tonight, uh, a few of, just a few of the many superlatives about each one of the notable districts, the towns and the places in Orange County in your role, role call. I look forward to immersing myself in the community in the coming months and I'm interested in hearing about your priorities in the work of the Planning Commission. So through that regard, I'll be reaching out to each of you next week. I'd love to set up time to, uh, to talk with you one-on-one. So that's my goal to uh, to reach out to each of you next week.
All right, Josh, before you go, thirty seconds or less, tell us where you came from, where you graduated at and give us a little, just a quick rundown.
Sure, sure, thank you very much. So I'm originally from the Piedmont area of South Carolina. That's where my family is all from. We, uh, we came down the mountain chain from Virginia to South Carolina and North Carolina, stopping on the way. Uh, I have cattlemen in my family, uh, the rolling hills of Orange County speak to me greatly. I had the great good fortune to marry a Virginian and uh we played a little tug-of-war back and forth between where we met in South Carolina and where we found ourselves in Virginia. I have family in Goochlin County where I live. And uh most recently, I've been working in Chesterfield County, but I worked for local government, for state government, for private enterprise. And my specialties are history as well as community planning. Um, I've had the great joy of um being able to work in some places uh all around the region. Um, I'm, I'm a graduate of Furman University and through the Historic Preservation Program at the University of Georgia. So those are my, my alma maters.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, Sandra, you got anything else?
Um, the only thing that I think I would add now is just to um remind you all that uh Signature Series will be back on our agenda on April first. And we have received their um, their submission and follow-up to your discussion with them um a couple or so months ago. I mean, it, it has, they, they submitted the additional material this week, so we, we haven't really had time to start reviewing it yet, but, but it has come to the office.
Okay, is any commissioner have any comments?
Mr. Brooks and fellow members of the commission, I encourage you to study and do your research more on solar farms because we've got more coming.
Um, just a reminder also, the, I attended the Economic Development Planning Group meeting a week ago. I, I think I sent out an email, but it looks like Kenny Dobson and crew are gonna start activating stuff for the G, uh, GWAP area and Wilderness Run in about three months. That's a big.
That, that's.
Okay, our next meeting, okay, our next meeting will be March eighteenth, uh, not April the first. And I'm going to try, if that agenda is not overloaded, have a uh presentation on solar farms for us at that meeting. It has not been developed yet, but in talking with the uh Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, he has whispered in my ear some things he'd like us to pay attention to. So I'm gonna um try to have that so that we can be better versed on solar farms and things like that so we know what the advantages and the pitfalls. Because I don't care what it is, everything has good parts, but everything has bad parts. Um, so we'll see where they are there. Is there anything else to come before the commission? Then I thank you all for your tireless nights. Sorry it took us so long, we got a lot of things done. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second it.
All right, I saw Julie smile, I knew she would get that. That we adjourned, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, we're talking on the eighteenth, welcome aboard, Josh.
Hey, Josh, do you?